salutin muna Councillor Liza Ezequera Councillor Silito Oconquerera
Presidente
Councillor Berna Esdeleabo Councillor Kober Tinoiz Councillor Dalia Emdeleon Councillor Alfred Perecy De Castro Ex-division members Diga na magawaran ngayon Presidente Robben Di Bakay At panluto ng Federation of Sanggoyan Kabataang Presidente Robert Lito Nunez November 2021
November is on the ball may now certify the president's authority We will have the opportunity to Prove an agenda any in a kind business for the day
We have to assign business sir The first one is the resolution of the city mayor Artur Izzel Esté to execute a bid of donation for three parcels of land in Sabo Pangasinan State University and Alaminus City Campus Located at Parangme Gulanay, Alaminus, Pangasinan More particularly described to be A parcel of land with an area of 3,865 square meters Located at Parangme Gulanay, Alaminus, Pangasinan And declared under tax declaration number 28001862 Including included their own Their own specifically Morita Braganza Building Declared under tax declaration number 28001015 And a parcel of land containing an area of A parcel of land containing an area of 716 square meters located at Parangme Gulanay, Alaminus, Pangasinan Forward by transfer certificate of title number And declared under tax declaration number 2800901863 And a parcel of land with an area of 2,652 square meters located at Parangme Gulanay Declared under tax declaration 2800901015 And Other item is the resolution before endorsing to the Office of Senator Christopher Lawrence Boom Tesoro Bo With a request for funding for concreting of farm-to-market roads and bars for rice in the city of Alaminus Amounting to 50 million pesos
So decided to assign business that I heard this morning Uh, please tell the lang Councillor De Castro Uh, chairs for the five minutes Wait, this is that, this chairs for the five minutes Okay Bala no, bala
Item number six of the Group
Ah Six Anymore important eh, six
Item, item two, three Two, three, four, five
Actually, Councillor, item number four and Four and five, uh, that's explanatory naman ito And then ang mahaba is yung, yung six
Item number six, uh Should be started with, it is up over five currently We have a time table so we give item number
Okay So, when we try to item number
Saban ng ano diyan
Huh?
Item number six, please
Hindi, kaya, kaya ko yun
Huh?
Mag-aadapt daw Yung naassign yung ano, yung kay Bongo, yung ano Kaya na sa yung, yung sa ano sign, talagang yung naitem number one sana sign Yung talagang yun next time, next week natin i-time Yung item number two, okay lang Which one? I, ano ba natin ito? I, yung, bale, ihearing natin ito, kasi Yung ova't Next, kailan ito? Kailan yung ataba ito? Item number one?
Baguio?
Hindi, yung ano, yung, sana sign Yung sa PSU
Hehe, muna natin?
Hindi, talaga naassign siya eh, so ihearing akin natin o Adjust natin next steps Kitaan ba natin Hearing natin, okay
This is the one natin, no, we need to report?
Okay Okay, we report naha And then, yung How to, may saling Climate change action, okay naman, okay naman Yung AIP, okay na patayo, naman namin Dispense teleagent po, kala Yung second reading ng Uh, marriage license Tsaka yung Transcination And dispense defer, kala Defer to next session Dispense at the session? Yung item number one, yung Integrated Terms of Leadership, hindi naman, hindi naman si item number one Okay, magalis talaga naman ito My card, uh, Councillor We dispense all committee reports And, uh And, uh, new business, item number one and two And naassign ano nila Without issue my session Dispense the records
So, this chair I move that the following items under our Calendars Except for item number
Okay, um, so we be moved by Councillor De Castro Uh, any secretary Councillor, Yolanda, Councillor, Bino, the Councillor, Michelle, the Councillor, Alfred, Baffin For the approval of the same agenda Uh, differing As is, except we defer Um, item number one to every other committee report And item number one and two under new business Any objection? Ringan the chair agenda Presumably So, adoption of the general secretary, any motion? Councillor Ezequera
Mr. Standing Officer, I move for the adoption of the general secretary of the SPO in the session Session held on October 6, 2020
If we move by Councillor Ezequera, second by Councillor Chison, Councillor Bina, Councillor Montelera, Councillor, Councillor Vial For the adoption, the same general secretary, any objection? Ringan the same general secretary's adoption Privilege teachers, anyone? Anyone concerned of the body? Councillor Elba Uh, there was a proposal na gawa tayong ordinance, anti-invasion ordinance Na pwede pagawalan yung Rani Nai sa barangay para matapag aral yung mga bata, ito ba yun? So, siguro refer na natin sa Ano ordinance sa baga binado? Pero hindi sila magiting natuha Eh, pwede namang, effective for the one, it is the following yun Okay, kasi ihearing na naman siguro natin So Kasi kung problema eight to five ano oras, para nine to three ganun, paano mo din Okay, yung mga bata pa, yung mga bata We will, I would like to refer this to the public chair, uh, on Tisha Mager Councillor Verena, so, sasara po tayong hearing mo For this ordinance Sila po din yun ito Friday, Friday, five, five Friday October
Three days
Ten days Okay, please invite our TNT representative, our Posto chief And, uh, our legal Attorney walter Reportedly, first na maghiyo ng, and then to follow the ordinance So, sino pa pa rin tahanin, naman, yun lang po na So, so ordered, uh, October 23, Friday, and Next item, ordinance enacting the annual budget of calendar year 2020 Councillor
Yes, sir, I think that we We first, uh Took our job to do a, uh, a And, uh, study how we proceed, we feel We remain a Friday
Monday
Monday na
Monday Oh, tayo na, para mediyun muna natin
Monday na, ano, in the budget
Wala pa po, yeah?
Yung na natin matay, para magbaliw aking
Patuusapan na natin Ano oras kita ayoko
10:00 AM
10:00 AM, 12:00 AM, Monday, 10:00 AM Captain Dave, uh Councillor Doc, uh, set, uh, set, uh, unpack, unpack, uh DNA regarding the annual budget 2021 of the City of Alaminus On Monday, cannot make the money Any objection to that? Uh, ringan, Monday, 10:00 AM, for annual budget 2021 Okay, at the side of the Um, next item
I consent for post resolution Under item number one, we have the request for resolution of the city mayor Artur Izzel Esté To enter the Novantop Agreement filed between the City Government of the City of Alaminus, Pangasinan And the Convoy of Hope Kids Incorporated for the implementation of the integrated Change of Theory and Development Program in the City And item number two is a request for a resolution of the city mayor Artur Izzel Esté to enter the Novantop Agreement Filed between the City Government of the City of Alaminus, Pangasinan and the Alaminus Doctors Hospital As the city's partner in catering to patients with immediate medical needs under COVID-19 And item number three is a request for resolution confirming approving total The proposed calendar year 2020 supplemental annual investment program Number seven of the City of Alaminus, Pangasinan Amounting to 14 million 378,128 pesos and 97 centavos Item number four is a request for resolution approving the additional partial list Of specific projects funded out of the 21st Development Fund amounting to 263,947 pesos The Special Purpose Appropriation Fund amounting to 2 million 670,020 pesos and 20 centavos And the Special Education Fund amounting to 201,516 pesos Of the City of Alaminus for calendar year 2020 And item number five is a request for resolution approving And the additional partial list, this, this specific project funded out of the 21st Development Fund Amounting to 55,478 pesos and 39 centavos The Special Purpose Appropriation Fund amounting to 597,220 pesos and 96 centavos and The loan funded projects amounting to 4 million 940,130 pesos and 36 centavos of the City of Alaminus for calendar year 2019 And the last item Enforcing to the Department of Budget and Management Central Office the following priority projects of the City of Alaminus, Pangasinan To be funded under Republic Act 11494, otherwise known as the Bayonnia Code Prover as one act To wait procurement of five units of this crew Multi-purpose, big, including units of ambulance Amounting to 10 million 445,000 Procurement of food assistance and other vehicles for affected house, affected households 20 million 210 pesos Procurement of Test kits, 5 million, procurement of medical supplies and equipment 3 million 999,650 pesos Procurement of other supplies, consumables, equipment, 4 million Procurement of various medicines, 2 million And procurement of personal protective equipment, 5 million
According to 10 million 444,860 So Where are they? Have they After this, move to the dispensary room, I will go forward Uh, Yolanda And Councillor Tariq, any And to which I guess to add the number one and two?
For item number one, we have Madam Our City Division Officer Two, Madam Berlina Francisco and Doctora Kristi Salako Medical Officer Three of the CHO And For the item number two, we have Doctora Daphne DiOzon, Medical Officer Three of the CHO
Okay, uh, sila po ba, eh, yung Anggali May nakakapagpo, po? And the, uh
So, uh, together with, I, together with Doctora Kristi Salako, here is the present Intent of from 140,000 A faith-based non-government organization, non-profit organization Uh, from Spain to USA Through the Office Sinapolito Sa Fili, the Council of Convoy of Hope Kids Incorporated So, last September 1st, 2020, together with the City of Ophir Get the movie of the City of the Social Office, together with the City Mayor Uh, the National Director and OIC and Research for Global Projects on the Convoy of Hope Kids over to discuss and present their intentions To provide their, uh, very noble program on food assistance for the children of Alaminos So, through the Food Assistance Program, I intend to do that on the feeding program Through the Mana Path, which is a rice soya, uh, rice soya food For one-year to four-years-old natural children In regardness of nutritional status and also Cool-like food assistance to working families of 15,000 people And also for school children, since A feeding program for school children will still be provided, so It is a part of what is good for that are the, uh, covered for So, through this feeding program, a half feeding will be done But parents will be trained to clustering proper organization and clustering of parents And it will be delivered, uh, delivered to the houses of the beneficiaries So, again, parents be, uh, upon the approval of the Mowa There will be social preparations and parents will be oriented and be trained on the different menus On the preparation of the Mana Path And of course, a counter fight for an LGU is the mobilization of the benefic, uh, beneficiaries And the data Then the barangay nutrition council for technical assistance and then of monetary use So, to start with, we will be, we're intending to have a pilot barangay of barangay Maawi Covering 87 schoolchildren, one to four years old Uh, daycare, enrolled in daycare and non-behire And of course, for the school children, for, through the school nutrition coordinator So, uh, to give you, uh, a brief I give, uh, a brief nutritional status of the City of Alaminos From the third, with the three cities of, in the province of Pangasinan For underweight and to be underweight We have the lowest among the three cities in, uh, Organeta, San Carlos and Alaminos For distanced and to be distanced We are second to the lowest Then for wasted and to be wasted We are the lowest, we have the lowest So, this, uh, very noble program of the, of the Hope Kids They will be providing all the materials And it will be the, uh, implementation and coordination will be on our part So, we will thus, they thus both prepare na po our pilot barangay, barangay Maawi And this program is also in response to the nutrition during COVID-19 For our peaceful children to increase their immune system With regarding the present situation with this pandemic So, uh, furthermore, Doctora Kristi Salako Nutrition Program for the City of City of Office Will, uh, will discuss to you the legal cases When it's about yung mga legal base na cover, Doctora Kristi
Thank you, ma'am Good night, po, doctor
Doctoring po
Good night, po, doctor
Um, we add, uh, here the case On the 59th of May of 2020, under the Hope Kids and the Municipal Government of Alaminus City For the implementation of program to support the goals of RE 11037, Alaminus Subsanchang Pagkain para sabakan, keep it moving Uh, number one, the Republic Act Number 8, to act known as the National Speaking Law To combat the battle of the youth, nutrition building, and that governance to move And to that their physical, moral, spiritual, and intellectual, social well-being Uh, it also Uh, it's most great relationship between all the people As a part of students to develop and learn Uh, so that it also address that this program, the problem of undernutrition among seventeen-year-old children The other Republic Act is the U.S. and U.P.I., otherwise known as the Adult and School Program Which provides avenues for target entities to seek The delivery of better quality education to public schools Whether in the elementary, secondary, tertiary level, that can be located Uh, in any of the, uh, twenty poorest province, counties identified By the Presidential Council for County State Development Network Or any other government office, task with identifying such The Republic Act Number 9155, otherwise known as the Governance of Base Education Act Chapter Uh, also establish schools and community networks encouraging Detective participate, participate in all teacher organizations and non-academic personnel of public schools And parents, teachers, community association Uh, the Council of Hope commits and is responsible For the provision of technical assistance Particularly capacity development of, as well as in time grants Deep in time to help, uh, attaining the goals of, the goals of partnership mission And the specific, and with yearly targets of the above mentioned components Uh, there inside, uh, grants may fund, but not limited to the calling form The fortified food pack, multi-guarantee and micro nutrition for children adolescent Girls and pregnant and lactating mothers And we put our play training and input, including seeds and Basic farming implements for schools and community schools Uh, garden Both matching in time grass or full waste water sanitation and hygiene Micro structure practice We want empowerment to nutrition education and the nutrition sensitive micro and self-communication development
Excuse me po, uh, yeah, um, actually, the, there na kasi ng Mowa already Uh, I, I don't think we have a issue do po sa madidigil na more of yung counterpart to that Yung, pero ba tayong, from the City of Office
So, ang pinaka counterpart ako na gabi, the conversation and the data O sino po yung mga beneficiaries, since we have, uh, master this data of, uh, beneficiary For mga ages one to four years old, and even school children Then, of course, we put coordination with the different barangays And the barangay nutrition council and the different health workers
So, thank you po, uh, any questions for from the body, kay Doctora Salako, kay Maangbergi? Any questions ba? Councillor De Castro, we have an Barangay Maawi is the Okay, so with that, uh, Doctora Salako, may gusto ba kayong sabihin? Tignan po, tignan nga
So, ito na po ay in the response to Sir Nogralles, uh, fight on zero hunger Yung sinakalisen ko na zero hunger na mitigation na We, pinapat, uh, lislimes ko ng, ng goals, ng national, sa buong
Councillor, say ito, doctor
Uh, Convoy of Hope, sir
Yeah
Yeah Yes, sir, uh, the goals we The goals we give to again
Yeah, so, siguro, when they visit the city, maybe Maschedule on a Tuesday para makita ang gabi sa session
Ah, yes, sir
Or pag-needent po sila sa City of Office, maitinvite nalang po yung
Uh, according to director, uh, we should provide them the schedule Then we should get some invite, kung ano po yung mas convenient po sa
Kung kailan siguro sila piminti ngayon, magpapagawa sa inis So, is that signal at eh, to, uh Or, uh, maybe one Tuesday, the mahahapag sa barangay, discuss your conference Okay?
Yes, sir
Any other questions, po? With that, thank you very much, uh, Doctor Salako at, uh, Cafetech So, we proceed now to item number So we proceed now to item number two. Doctor Secretari.
For item number, for item number two, we have Dr. Laxmi Uso.
That's right, po, Dr. Felicisalaco.
Good afternoon po sa inyo lahat. So for this agenda, the local government unit will be establishing our very own dialysis center, which can ask Alaminos City Nation uh Dialysis Center, which is located at Antaram. Uh it will provide um dialysis procedures for uh dialysis patients on regular basis. So the LGU created a memorandum of agreement for partnership, partnership, sorry, for um our uh partner hospital, which is Alaminos Doctors Hospital, for in case of problems to dialysis patients, we could readily bring our patients to Alaminos Doctors Hospital, sir.
Okay, um. Any questions of the body? Uh, Secretary Director.
Doctor, how long uh did the running doctor part of it spend while the disinfectioning the dialysis?
Sir, yesterday, we have talked to the local director as well as Dr. Corinato. We have agreed to close the hospital for two weeks for massive disinfection. However, Mount Elsterel Palas have advised them, uh they could close up to seven days, provide them that those staff, in each staff would not exhibit any symptoms such as scuff fever and no staff would have uh COVID positive results, sir.
And uh then the, and we keep Mowa, did you were able to discuss also if cancers are at the end of the whole of the facility? Uh the same, our patients will require the under uh facility.
Yes, sir.
In there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Felicisalaco.
Thank you, sir.
Maguhclarify po lang, magsasala po sila ng two weeks, buong hospital, may dialysis?
Yes, sir.
Lahat?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, po, uh from the body regarding the said partnership? So basically, uh may establish po tayo sa Antaram Dialysis Center and then pag nandini natin, pag napula.
And nagka-problema, sir.
Ipoforward natin uh ADH.
Yes, sir.
So, uh can you update also the body regarding our dialysis center in a two to three week operation?
Uh as scheduled, sir, they have been scheduling the opening of the dialysis center for the end of this uh month. However, uh our dialysis nurses will be undergoing or undergoing um seminars, training at the Manas City. And we could take them for one month, sir.
I believe, yes, you suppo. Get this moment, do you?
Yes, sir.
Kasi dubadami po 'yung kaso natin dahil sa mapapadialysis na ngon, so siguro pag magawa natin by November, yun mas madali mo uh pagpapa, papapadialysis po mga tao.
Yes, sir.
What is, any other questions? I have a last question, uh do we, from the Antaram, we reported to ADH? Sinong kabaya, tayo diba, or?
No, sir. It would be the experience of the patient, sir.
So parang, diba, autorit, authority for that, diba?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, uh thank you very much, po, Doctor Felicisalaco.
Thank you po.
So we proceed to item number three, four, five, six, Doctor Secretari.
For item number three, uh number three, the supplemental investment program number seven, we have Madam Raulenda Ruiz, our City Budget Officer, and for item number four, we have engineer, who has in front diba, our city engineer.
So the three and six, so lang mga that, three, eight, to six, one?
Three and six, sir.
Three and six.
Adaptin po sa ating lahat, uh ito po 'yung local government support fund, fourteen million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred twenty, uh iyan po 'yung pinadal uh galing sa national government. Yung one hundred thousand po 'yung ating counterpart, and total project cost is fourteen point three million. Uh ang ganda po 'yung pera.
Ang ganda po, no?
Local government support fund.
Look, um, okay, okay.
National government.
Pigeon. Pigeon.
Iyan po 'yung mga nakieipon po natin sa mga taxes, pro, pro tax, under tax. Ang project na gusto para sa Manggul.
Mangglo, uh, no, no, no? Pacway? Pagroo pa yun, di ba kaya roo din ang project? I think that's a problem. Di require na nasa roo.
Ah, 'yun po kasi 'yung nilikasan natin ng condo nung na, ano, sila. Napadala ng money po.
Okay, so, siya, item number six, alam mo, ma'am. Any questions for the body, item number three? After adoption, ma'am.
Um, wait, talaga nakapan na ang?
Pondok po.
Nung po doon na 'yan, naka-alat na saan?
Opo, nasa treasury ako. Opo, nasa bank account ako natin since August fourth ako. Nung humili lang kami ng snapshot, dun lang namin nakita na meron pala pondong dumating. Eh, wala po kasing notice of, ano, uh, cash allocation kaming natanggap. Kaya, ano? Hindi po. Very specific po kasi luka niyang, ano place po, sa Mangglo lang po.
Doon ang reply natin?
Yes po. Kasi nag-submit po tayo ng program, sir.
Any other questions? Talaga may menu, hindi ka may menu yun, di ba? Any other questions po lang na? So, we proceed to item number six.
Sir, uh, ito po nga lang 'yung ating, ano, bayamihan to recover as one act. 'Yung dati po, bayamihan to grant, to, ano? Bayamihan po heal as one. At least, um, for to recover-
As one.
As one. So, item po, 'yung, wala, uh, tinanong po namin sa DDM, talaga malagis specific na condo na ibigay per LCU. So, depende nalang po sa isa submit nating, ano, uh, budget, kung ano 'yung priority. Maninigi po sila po maninigi. Kaya, ayan, tinanong na po namin na COVID-related din po lahat 'yan. Nag-a-touch po ako nung badut circular sa mga copyan ko, saka program, uh, project proposal.
Ito po sure na ya ala sa city, di ba? Di ba?
Sure po 'yan na popondoan nila, sir.
May other thing, ba't ba?
Ah, sir, dapat may submit po 'yan di po October thirty, thirty-one. Pero ang thirty-one po kasi Saturday po October twenty.
After adoption, ma'am.
Maginili lang sila 'yan? O, hindi po na 'yan? O, maginili lang sila sa mga?
Hindi po kasi masagot sa amit ng DDM Regional Office kung maninigi sila o popundoan lahat. Basta, they assure us na may condo po per, uh, locality po.
May kung, po, you let of, five, you, number one, 'yung, you, you rescue motive for duty, eh. Ang alala ko na yun sa barangay. Ang alala ko na yun sa barangay KZ, 'yung mga tao barangay.
Ah, 'yung twenty-seven units po, uh, ito postqual, post qualification po kanina.
Okay, so, ano 'yung DGM?
Uh, pagre, uh, titiman po 'yung mga legal documents po nila kung-
DJZ?
Hindi po. Dun sa supplier, 'yung, uh, na, nanalo po. Nung bigger po kasi, motor class ako.
Ilan units po?
Twenty-seven units.
Twenty-seven barangay. How old you this year?
Ah, sir, kasi postqual na po eh. After post qualification, ten days, uh, notice to award, and then after twenty-two, five days, notice to proceed from that.
And here po sa ating budget proposals, may menu ba? Or tayo na? Okay na ng general, eh, po, ang mga, mga barangay.
Yes, sir. Uh, ito talaga, inansol po ni Mayo lahat sa mga, 'yung CSWD, health, at saka, um, CDR. Sila po ang nagsabi, pero 'yung, 'yung priority, parang si Mayo po nag-ano, kung ano 'yung mga priority natin po.
Once pumasok ito, ma'am, kila, mag-aaral ka ba ng supplier na bag? Kung naggrant po?
Ah, depende po dun naman sa, ano, sa guidelines di mo need na ibigay po ng DDM.
Sorry, wala pang guidelines?
Wala pa po. Guidelines lang po 'yung mga, how to submit po po sa.
Any other question? Uh, wala na, thank you very much, ma'am. So, we proceed to item number four and five. I think this is the, sorry, but, mayroon ba tayong tanong? Item number, would like to acknowledge every area, ma'am. So... Mayroon ba tayong tanong?
Wala ng tanong yun.
Wala ng tanong dito? Ito lang, eh, Christmas Eve, pagka-hubbysmas, eh. Any questions for regarding item number four and five? The partnership is, uh, provided for to us. Any questions for? Wala na po. Uh, regular delay, so, we will review. So, we will now leave these questions alone. Uh, what's the pressure of the body regarding item? Item number one, councilor, after, uh?
Mister, sir, uh...
Kaya na, di, ano ba?
Uh, three, two, three, four, five, six. The board by councilor Abalahen, second by councilor Yabago, councilor, second by councilor Sison. We include item number one, which is the day of celebration. Langang mga problema po, two, three, four, five, six, um, after adoption, shall we, do time of departure? The board by councilor Adop, the third by DZ, and by councilor Abago. We include item number two, three, four, five, and six in the next day for celebration. Any objection? Can you not to share five items where you often would be the first to go to the celebration? Next item, unassigned.
Communications received, uh, review of barangay SK1 as supplemental budget for the twenty of the following barangays. Among them, West, Bolaca, San Antonio, and Arana, and Luba.
Mister J, I, uh, let me speak to the committee here for also reviewing this, uh, budget on Friday at nine thirty.
Our question is, uh, chairman of five, um, chief finance, and the vice president, please. Please don't be hearing on Friday, my TV is among the others. Please invite the said guys and to remind them of our, uh, protocol about seeing our students. So, may subway to, no? Or, or? Consider it, do not. So, for our next item, unassigned.
Under unassigned business, we have the request for resolution of our city's three mayor, Art Bryce, suggesting to execute an initiative donation for three parcels of land table of American State University and Aminas City Council.
Ano, ganoon po sa'yo pala? Counselor, uh, Chief Superintendent, Superintendent? Hearin mo na natin, siguro?
Sir, chairman, uh, schedule for a committee hearing, towards, uh, Monday?
Oh, Monday na lang, Monday na, para mga katanga.
Sir, sa may sarangan?
Monday, ano po 'yung inbox sa Monday?
October, uh, ten?
Ten?
Ten? Ten? I don't know, so Monday yan, ito yun, sakin 'yung regional, Monday na rin. Twenty-six?
Ten po 'yung.
Ten?
So, what?
Ten, kapag re-apply, uh, impact?
Impact po 'yung ten, sir.
Ten?
Ten, ten.
Free councilor?
Number impact na ng may thirty?
Nine thirty?
Monday?
Do sa you, sir?
Twenty-four?
The budget by birthday?
Hindi po.
You call to you.
Birthday? The second one? By the way, councilor, how is to file? One? After that? After that?
So, what?
Monday? Okay, I'm also, uh, the chairman of language, schedules a committee hearing regarding the said, uh, proposal on Monday, Monday, one AM, so, order. So, just to clarify, uh, after adoption, healing for the budget of barangayes is nine thirty AM, Monday, October twenty-six, and then followed by our handbang, uh, ten AM, and then followed by our land use at one AM. Next item, so, next item, next unassigned.
Request for resolution for the endorsing to the office of Senator Christopher Lawrence Bonkisooro Boom, the request for funding for completing on farm-to-market road at Paris barangay, amounting to twenty million pesos.
So, this is a proposal, ma'am. Chairman of the committee, sir.
Sir, journey. Can you put it? Uh, sir, I, uh, hope for the decision of the date.
Uh, the board by councilor, Superintendent, and Secretary of Council, uh, after the adoption, Councilor, uh, we put the set, I think that this is good for the celebration. Next unassigned, unassigned. Uh, another unassigned business, talaga po pag-inedan kanina. Uh, I think nag-iishout na 'yung IATF dun sa purview. So, our suggestion po, isabay na natin i-public hearing 'yung purview ng adjustment. Para pagka, in-approved na ng province, madali na tayong mag-approve dito. Anong tingnan mo yun? Halimbawa, 'yung, nung hearing natin siya, nung siya's ordinance, on Friday, isabay na natin 'yung public hearing ng, uh, nung purview na proposed, na gawing ten to five. Para pagka nagbalot, bago si province, pasan na lang, bale, hindi na tayo maghihearing pa ulit. Dito na tayo public hearing?
Ay, tayo tayo na lang yun.
Basta declare it as public hearing, para, talaga, eh, nga. Okay na, sabay na natin, di ba? Sabay na, okay na, so... Sabay ko na kay Councilor Werner Abago, iset na rin po natin sa Friday, October twenty-three. Isabay na natin ng ten AM, talaga, no? O ten thirty? Ano, ten, Friday?
Twenty-four, sir.
Ah, so, we set a public hearing regarding the adjustment of the purview hours amended to the ordinance on Friday, uh, ten thirty AM. Any objection to that? Do you mind to set public hearing is set on Friday, October twenty-three, uh, at ten thirty AM? Next item, unassigned. We deferred the three committee reports. We proceed to new business, unfinished business, unassigned.
The first item of the unfinished business is the, is the request for resolution approving adopting the twenty-twenty-one local final change action plan of the City of Alaminos, Congress, and.
So, uh, councilor, second by unassigned, regarding item number one. If she want to hear, uh, my name was here, uh, last session, and then she explained the said, uh, yun. So, ano sagit? This ano major po? Wala, ato malaking problema po, say to last year. So, they want to, uh...
So, we, we dispose of this, eh, if we approve na?
Ah, let's see, tayo natin si-
Yeah, yeah.
So, how's the second there, ah, shall we? Uh, okay, the board by Councilor, Secretary of there, for the adoption of this twenty-twenty-one local final change action plan. Any second?
I see.
By Councilor Adop, Councilor, the governor, Councilor, for the adoption of this resolution. Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption? We proceed to item number two?
Resolution approving, adopting the twenty-twenty-one local subseries reduction management plan amounting to thirty-five million eight hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred one pesos of the City of Alaminos, Congress, and.
Mister, sir, we need for the adoption.
The board by Councilor, Secretary of there, and then by Councilor, Councilor, and Councilor, the governor, for the here, resolution. Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption?
Resolution confirming approving total the proposed annual investment program for calendar year twenty-twenty-one of the City of Alaminos, Congress, and.
Any other, uh, suggestions for our IATF? Wala na, any motion?
Yes, sir, yeah, if there are no more, uh, assistance for sharing of need, I'm not that able to answer.
The board by Councilor Adop, any second, Chair by Councilor, Councilor, the governor, Councilor, the governor, Councilor, and, uh, for the, uh, adoption of this resolution. Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption? So, we dispense item number one, item number two, and the two business, uh, for two weeks, the next day, the same for two weeks from now. And then, uh, we proceed to verify.
Next, please. Resolution of our city's city mayor, Art Bryce, sellers, they to enter the memorandum of agreement, uh, between the city government of Alaminos, Congress, and the convoy, Bobo Philippines, for the implementation of the integrated child installation and development program in the City of Alaminos.
So, will we wait for the company profile, or?
I just want to wait for the company profile.
Hindi na manataga, okay na, okay na. So, and put it sa dito, ah, win by habit. Okay na. So, Councilor, the drop moves to defer the said item pending, uh, background and public profile of the said, uh, chairman of division and for their, uh, appearance in our seventh hall, second by Councilor, after back night. Uh, next item?
In fight po namin sina.
Oh, uh, si Mangglo, siya na mag-schedule, si Lula. Public profile po na, bigyan tayo ng coffee, tapos, schedule na natin, to Mangglo, para isa-hatag, hindi na yun. Next item?
Resolution of our city's city mayor, Art Bryce, sellers, they to enter the memorandum of agreement, uh, between the city government of the City of Alaminos, Congress, and and the Alaminos Doctors Hospital, as the city's partner in catering to patients with medical needs undergoing dialysis.
Counselor, approve. The board by Councilor, after back night, second by Councilor, the governor, Councilor, for the adoption of this resolution. Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption? Next item?
Resolution confirming approving total the proposed calendar year twenty-twenty supplemental annual investment program number seven of the City of Alaminos, Congress, and amounting to forty million three hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred twenty-eight pesos and ninety-seven thousand.
Counselor, adopt? The board by Councilor, second by Councilor, the governor, Councilor, the governor, Councilor, Sison, Councilor, the governor, Councilor, the governor, for the adoption of this resolution. Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption? Next item?
Resolution approving the initial partial list of the city projects funded out of the twenty-first development fund amounting to two hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven pesos. The special purpose of creation amounting to two million six hundred seventy thousand and fifty pesos and thirty-nine thousand. And the special education fund amounting to two, two hundred one thousand five hundred sixteen pesos of the City of Alaminos for funding earlier twenty-twenty.
The board by Councilor, second by Councilor, the governor, Councilor, Sison, and, uh, the governor, the governor, and, uh, the governor, the governor, any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption? Next item?
Resolution approving the initial partial list of the city projects funded out of the twenty-first development fund amounting to fifty-five thousand, four hundred seventy pesos and thirty-nine thousand. The special purpose of creation fund amounting to five hundred ninety-seven thousand twenty-two pesos and ninety-nine thousand. And the loan funded projects from DDP amounting to four million nine hundred forty thousand one hundred thirty pesos and thirty-nine thousand.
The board by Councilor, second by Councilor, the governor, the governor, any objection? Any objection? Do you mind to say the solution is here by adoption?